Call to orders, City of Forest Park Council Meeting Number 1263, December 21st, 2015. Let us stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk call the roll, please.
Here.
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 Johnson.
Here.
Here.
That could show that all members are present. Second item on the agenda is the minutes. You receive copies of the minutes. Are there any questions or additions to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. Item number three is a presentation, first presentation Business of the Month Award, Cincinnati Scuba and Aquatics, Mr. Graham.
Mayor members of council, thank you very much. Our December Business of the Month is yet another new addition to our business community. Cincinnati Scuba and Aquatics recently renovated a vacant building on Northland Boulevard, bringing a first-class dive shop to Forest Park. While Learn to Dive at Cincinnati Scuba and Aquatics, their award-winning Learn to Dive program meets or exceeds all national standards. They offer classroom, confined water sessions, and open water training dives. Students can complete these dives locally or on a vacation with a padded instructor. Once an individual attains certification, they can participate on one of the great diving trips arranged by CSA throughout the year. More experienced divers can take advanced open water and rescue dive courses. You can also find all of your gear at Northland, at the Northland shops. CSA sells some of the top brands, including Aquilon, SEAC, Scuba Pro, Deep Sea, Aquasphere, Lavacore, and many others. You can even rent the gear you need, when you need it. Their rental shop ensures that whether you need gear for class or for fun, you always have what you need, when you need it. Not only can you buy or rent the gear you need, you can have it serviced at CSA as well. Their service department is unmatched, and their experts are trained by each manufacturer to service your life support system according to precise standards and with expert care. We wanted to call attention to this unique company for their investment in Forest Park. As I mentioned earlier, CSA recently moved its world-class showroom and education center to 401 Northland Boulevard, renovating what had been a vacant building and a key gateway into our community, and converting this property into a true community asset. On behalf of the Economic Development Commission and our entire development team, we would like to welcome Cincinnati Scuba and Aquatics to Forest Park. I don't know if anyone was able to join us tonight from the company. Mike Mays is the owner. I did speak with them. I didn't know if Mike was going to be able to join us or not. Mayor, unless there's somebody here from the company tonight, I'll make sure that Mike receives the award.
Thank you, Paul. Next item on the agenda, on the presentations, is the oath of office for Officer Colin Bogart. Chief Officer.
Thank you, sir.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I instate your now.
Aye, Colin Bogart.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Ohio.
Of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter.
And the Charter.
Of the municipality.
Of the municipality.
Of Forest Park, Ohio.
Of Forest Park, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge of duties.
Discharge of duties.
As Forest Park Police Officers.
As a Forest Park Police Officer.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Well, good evening, O'Yorone. This is usually a very good time for me because it's always an addition to our police department. Colin will be our 37th police officer. We've been a couple of years getting to that mark, but we finally got to that 37, so let's hope we can keep a few more around and stay there for a while. Take out my glasses because I need to read the small print. Let me tell you a little bit about our newest police officer. Colin grew up in Springfield Township and graduated from Fenty Town High School. He attended the Cincinnati State and graduated with an associate's degree in fire science. He then attended the University of Cincinnati where he earned a bachelor's of science degree in criminal justice. Prior to his selection as a Forest Park Police Officer, you may already know him, he's already taken the oath, I believe, once before. He worked here as a firefighter for the Fire Department for five years, and he also worked for Sycamore Township Fire Department for one year. During his time as a firefighter, he attended the University of Cincinnati Paramedic Program, graduating in 2014. Colin is joined here tonight by his parents, Reed and Becky, his sister Rachel, and brother Joel, and I'm sure he has some other guests here and friends from the Fire Department. I know there was about four or five of them that actually attended his graduation, which was Friday, from the State Highway Patrol Academy, where he was graduated with the 134th basic class. I attend most of these, and as I attend them, I realize how much older I'm getting because mine was the 41st class. So 36 years later, I'm sitting there watching another one of our finest graduate from that prestigious school. So with that, I'd like to bring up Joel. I believe you're going to do the honors. Brother against brother.
I didn't say too many words.
And this is a brand-new badge, too, so it's probably got a pretty good poke there. So have at it. Very nice. You know, just real quick, just let me add that, you know, this time in this day and age, having police officers and young people, and men and women that want to join this profession, is kind of, it's getting hard to do that. And for those individuals to stand up and then say, "I'm going to make a difference in somebody's life, no matter what's going on in this world today, or this country, I'm going to do that and commit to it," that is commendable. And we have another young man here who obviously felt that call to duty as a firefighter. He got educated in the meantime and became a police officer now, so, you know, we're proud and happy to have him here. So Colin, I'm sorry, that's all yours.
Mayor, council members, chief, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. Obviously, I came to this city five years ago on the other side, and I'm sure I'll hear about it, I'll hear about it for the rest of my career here, on which side I'm supposed to be on. So each call, I'm going to run into those guys, I'm with these guys now, so I just want to say thank you for the opportunity, and I hope to make every single one of you proud while I serve here. Thank you, sir.
Comments from council, anyone? Councilwoman Holt.
I just want to say congratulations and thanks for not leaving Forest Park, from the Fire Department to the Police Department. It must be something here that keeps you here, and I'm happy to hear that. I know we do have the finest Police Department in the country, in the world that I know of, and I want you all to remember that if you happen to catch me doing a couple of miles over the speed limit. But congratulations and thanks for your service.
One else? Councilwoman Cottle and then Herbie.
Welcome, and congratulations, we're glad to have you here.
Councilwoman Herbie.
Yeah, I want to congratulate you, Colin, and your family. And you know, from having worked here for five years, you're stepping into a outstanding department, and you're coming from an outstanding department. So we appreciate your dedication to the city and wish you many years, and want to say to the families, you're giving us your son, brother, friend for a period of time, and it's a great credit to you that you're willing to share him with us, so thank you.
Ms. Barnes.
First, I'd just like to thank the family for letting us borrow your son for the next several years. And secondly, I would like to commend Colin, you know, I don't know how frequently this happens, where someone has both experiences, you know, and come into a role. That should bring you a very unique perspective on your role that you've selected today. I want to congratulate you for that, and for your previous accomplishments and contributions to the city. I look forward to seeing you in years to come, and good luck.
Good. Councilwoman Collins.
Congratulations and welcome back to Forest Park. It just does my heart happy to listen to your resume and how accomplished you are already, being on both sides, the fire side and the law enforcement side. And I'm really impressed and proud that you are from this area, you know, Green Hills, Springfield Township, all that's right around here, how well you know the area and the people. I just think that there's an asset to the city that we've added today.
Thank you. Mr. Southall.
Yes. Congratulations, Colin, and we look forward to seeing you in the Police Department for many, many years.
Thank you.
And Colin, you know, you and I have met many, many times. I think probably, if I'm not mistaken, the second time we met was at the hospital. And you had, you know, in the line of duty, you ended up there, and now you're with the Police Department, and I'm sure we're going to meet several more times, but not at that particular place, somewhere else. And to your family and friends, you know, he's added additions to his family, just as he had with the Fire Department, now just with the Police Department, so that family's continually growing, and we want you to know that we appreciate you and we appreciate him, and we look forward to his being with us for a long time to come. Again, congratulations, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Before we go to the next item on the agenda, which is communications from the public, I would add at this time that the usual practice is, this is when our crowd usually leaves us, you're more than welcome to stay, but don't feel that you have to. We appreciate all your being here, the guys out there, the guys here. It's good to see you supporting one of your own, one of our own. So thank you all for being here, and if you would choose to leave at this time, you might. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, glad to have you.
Congratulations, Colin.
Congratulations.
Okay, Colin, all right, Mayor.
Move to item number four on the agenda, communications from the public. This is time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped and recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to five minutes, seeing no members of the public except the Finance Director, if you want. We will then move to item number five, reporters standing committee, the first of those being Ways and Means Committee, Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes, briefly, I wanted to mention two things. One is the, okay, where did I put my notes? One is the Business Recognition Dinner, or Breakfast, excuse me, which will be taking place on Tuesday, January 12th, at 7:30 a.m. at Jack's Tavern. And the other is that the Environmental Awareness Department is having its annual Christmas tree recycling from Saturday, September 26th through January 10th at Kemper Meadow Park. And please remove the trimmings and take it there, and it will be chipped on the day after this closes. And that would conclude my report.
Any questions for Councilwoman Herbie? Hearing none. Councilwoman Herbie, in regards to the Christmas tree, these are live trees only, right?
Yes, sir, because you can't shred aluminum trees.
But you didn't say that, and I don't want anybody thinking.
No. This is, this is live trees.
Okay. And at this point, we don't have items for the work session after the break, which would be the 11th. Next committee reporter is Community Development, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to remind our residents that the upcoming water bill period that anyone may be in, that your stormwater assessments will begin to be on your water bill starting in this coming quarter. So that's an annual assessment that will be divided into four equal parts, so that the stormwater process can remain pure. If there's any questions, that would conclude my report.
Any questions for Mr. Burns? Hearing none, thank you, sir. Next committee reporter is Law Committee, Councilwoman Collins.
I have no report at this time, but I shall have reports after Christmas break.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilwoman Collins? Hearing none, the next item on the agenda, next reporter is Human Resources Committee, Councilwoman Holt.
I do not have a report on human resources, but I would like to wish everybody a happy holiday, safe, happy holiday season. But that concludes my report.
Any questions for Councilwoman Holt? Hearing none. Next reporter is Public Improvement and Facilities, Mr. Southall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report for Public Improvement Facilities at this time. I don't want to preempt Mrs. Cottle, so I'll wait till she makes her report, but I wanted to speak about some safety things that we should do for the holidays. But I will go and say that I wish everyone, to sound in my voice, a Merry Christmas and a prosperous and healthy New Year. But that'll be the end of my remarks. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Southall? Hearing none, the next committee reporter is Public Safety Committee, Councilwoman Cottle.
I have no report this evening. I would like to wish all our residents a Merry Christmas and Happy Holiday. Thank you.
Any questions for Councilwoman Cottle? Next reporter is Internal Government Relation and Communication, that's my committee, I have no report, and I'll answer any questions if there are any. That would conclude these standing committee reports. Mr. Southall, did you want to add something at this point?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to point out that the Fire Department has, and the reports have issued three areas, preventing fires, that we should keep our natural trees watered, stay healthy. One of the great hazards is shoveling snow, when we do have snow, it causes heart attacks preventably. And the third area would be to stay safe, have working carbon monoxide detectors, if you have a gas appliance or attached garage, working smoke detectors, two safe, clear paths out of the structure in case of a fire. And if you drive, do not drink, and if the weather turns bad, make adjustments for that driving situation. So with that, I think we should adhere to that, and that would complete my report on the safety area.
Any questions, additions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to commend the Fire Department and the staff, actually, as they contributed toward, I guess it was a giving from one of the families, we adopted one of the families, and many of council members actually also contributed to that. We did receive a report that the family received their gifts, and the children were very happy, or at least the mother was very happy, the children were asleep. So it was a great thing that everyone did in contributing to that.
Anything else on the reports? Hearing none, we will move to item number six, the mayor's report. I would just add my wishes for a happy holiday season to everyone. Those of our community who have finished, already finished, started and finished the Heinecker season, the Christmas season that is coming up, as well as the Kwanzaa season. And again, let's be mindful of, to be safe, and to be mindful, to be caring and giving to others. And finally, I would like to thank the members of the Parks and Recreation Commission for all of their work, and thank Freesias on Wynton Road for sponsoring again the Breakfast with Santa this past Saturday. That would conclude my report. If there are any questions, I would be happy to answer them. Hearing none, we go to item number seven, the city manager's report, Mr. Hodges.
Thank you. First, I want to thank the public work staff who decorated the trees this year. We've gotten a lot of additional comments, and I certainly want to express my appreciation for them putting a little extra effort into beautifying the front lawn for the municipal building. And as was referenced earlier, I want to also thank the Parks Recreation Commission and the staff for conducting the Breakfast with Santa. I attended that, it was well-attended, and people had a lot of fun, and Santa certainly made his arrival, and photos will be available, I'm sure, soon. Lastly, I'll report that the departmental reports have all been completed, they've been included in the council packet, they've also been placed on file with the Clerk of Council for public inspection. So that would conclude my report, but I would respond to any questions, if there are any.
Questions for the city manager. Hearing none, thank you, sir. Next item is item number eight, other reports, the first of those being the Law Director, Mr. Wykoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My report is actually going to be a question for Mr. Hodges. I received in the mail today copies of checks from Progressive Insurance Company for the damage that was done to our guardrail. We had filed a lawsuit about that, and I was wondering if you actually had received those checks.
We have not received those checks. Fortunately, our Finance Director is here, she can confirm if it went directly to the Finance Department. So the answer is, we have not received the checks yet.
I'll follow up with Progressive, but they just sent me copies, I don't know what they did with the original. But they are reimbursing us the $5,313 for the damage that was done, which is good. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the Law Director? Hearing none, the next committee reporter is Clerk of Council, Mrs. Hoffman.
I'd like to request a resolution number 48 dash 2015, or resolutions number 48 dash 2015 through 50, that's 2015, for posted as required, and that concludes my report.
Any questions for Clerk of Council? Thank you.
Not a question, but a comment. Sally, I want to thank you for the points, that is what you always give us every year, they're very lovely, thank you.
Anything else? Hearing none, we go to item number nine, unfinished business and general orders, is their motion. Councilwoman Herbie.
I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate occasions and read for the second time by title only, ordinances number 20 dash 2015 and 21 dash 2015.
Second. It's been moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate occasions and read for a second time by title only ordinances number 20-2015 and 21-2015. Is there a discussion? Councilwoman Herbie.
Just that these ordinances were read for the first time by title on December 7th, and also they were posted as required for the requisite amount of time to dispense with the reading in full.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk call a roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Byrne? Yes.
Howlin?
Yes.
Howlin?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules, pass 7-0. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 20 dash 2015. Would the clerk please read that, ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 20 dash 2015, and ordinance appointing John Earl Wykoff, Attorney at Law, as Solicitor, Law Director, and Prosecutor, and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the provision of legal services.
Is there a motion? Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move for passage of ordinance number 20 dash 2015.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt ordinance number 20 dash 2015. Is there any discussion, Mr. Burns?
Yes, thank you. As stated earlier, this is the second reading for formal action under consideration for this ordinance. This is basically a housekeeping item that we annually need to complete in preparation for the New Year, and the completion of the contract, or the execution of the contract for the prosecutor.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call a roll on ordinance number 20 dash 2015?
Howlin?
Yes.
Howlin?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson? Yes.
Southall? Yes.
Byrne? Yes.
Ordinance 20 dash 2015 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda, item B, ordinance number 21 dash 2015. Is there a motion? Mr. Burns? Would you read, would you read that ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 21 dash 2015, and ordinance appointing Derek E. Ma, Attorney at Law, as Public Defender, and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the provision of legal services.
Is there a motion, Mr. Burns?
Yes, I move for passage of ordinance number 21 dash 2015.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt ordinance 21 dash 2015. Is there a discussion, Mr. Burns?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As stated earlier, this is also the second reading, and now ready for formal action for the appointment of the prosecutor and law director. This is the annual contract renewal for the public defender, I'm sorry, for the public defender. There were no proposed changes in the contract, and with that, I would propose or urge adoption of this ordinance.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call a roll on 21 dash 2015?
Howlin?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson? Yes.
Southall? Yes.
Byrne? Yes.
Ordinance 21 dash 2015 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda, new business, Act 10, is there a motion? Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes, I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read by title only, resolution number 51 dash 2015.
Second. It's been moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read by title only, resolution number 51 dash 2015. Is there a discussion? Is there a discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk call a roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson? Yes.
Southall? Yes.
Byrne? Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules, pass 7-0. First new business item on the, first item on the new business is item A, resolution number 51 dash 2015. Would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution number 51 dash 2015, amending the resolution setting rates of pay for civil and non-civil service employees.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move adoption of resolution number 51 dash 2015.
Second. It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution 51 dash 2015. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, this resolution covers salary for the employees of the city of Forest Park, and it's been scheduled and budgeted for an across-the-board adjustment to the salary schedule. The general rate adjustment is approximately 2%, which is reasonably competitive for this region and within our budgeting ability. We're still in negotiations process with the Fire Association, so ultimately, this resolution will need to be amended in 2016 to reflect any settlement in that area. It also should be noted that we just reached a settlement agreement with the Teamsters in the Public Works Department, and provided that council approves that tentative agreement, there will be a separate resolution on tonight's agenda that would immediately amend this resolution to account for that. And I would urge adoption of this resolution. It also should be noted that we just reached a settlement agreement with the Teamsters in the public works department, and provided that council approves that tentative agreement, there will be a separate resolution on tonight's agenda that would immediately amend this resolution to account for that. And I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion on the resolution? Hearing none, would the clerk please call a roll on resolution fifty-one dash twenty fifteen?
Hope?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Hurley?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Hurley?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Hurley?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Hurley?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Hurley?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Hurley?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules passed seven zero. First new business item on the, first item on the new business is item A, resolution number fifty-one dash twenty fifteen. Would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution number fifty-one dash twenty fifteen, amending the resolution setting rates of pay for civil and non-civil service employees.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move adoption of resolution number fifty-one dash two thousand fifteen.
Second. It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution twenty-two dash twenty fifteen. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, this resolution covers salary for the employees of the city of Forest Park, and it's been scheduled and budgeted for an across-the-board adjustment to the salary schedule. The general rate adjustment is approximately 2%, which is reasonably competitive for this region and within our budgeting ability. We're still in negotiations process with the fire association, so ultimately, this resolution will need to be amended in two thousand sixteen to reflect any settlement in that area. It also should be noted that we just reached a settlement agreement with the Teamsters in the public works department, and provided that council approves that tentative agreement, there will be a separate resolution on tonight's agenda that would immediately amend this resolution to account for that. And I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion on the resolution? Hearing none, would the clerk please call a roll on resolution fifty-one dash twenty fifteen?
Hope?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Hurley?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Hurley?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
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 Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules passed seven zero. First new business item on the, first item on the new business is item A, resolution number fifty-one dash twenty fifteen. Would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution number fifty-one dash twenty fifteen, amending the resolution setting rates of pay for civil and non-civil service employees.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move adoption of resolution number fifty-one dash two thousand fifteen.
Second. It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution fifty-one dash twenty fifteen. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, this resolution covers salary for the employees of the city of Forest Park, and it's been scheduled and budgeted for an across-the-board adjustment to the salary schedule. The general rate adjustment is approximately 2%, which is reasonably competitive for this region and within our budgeting ability. We're still in negotiations process with the fire association, so ultimately, this resolution will need to be amended in two thousand sixteen to reflect any settlement in that area. It also should be noted that we just reached a settlement agreement with the Teamsters in the public works department, and provided that council approves that tentative agreement, there will be a separate resolution on tonight's agenda that would immediately amend this resolution to account for that. And I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion on the resolution? Hearing none, would the clerk please call a roll on resolution fifty-one dash twenty fifteen?
Hope?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
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 Yes.
Southall?
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 Yes.
Southall?